All right, good evening and welcome to your Village Board meeting of July 28, 2022. Will everyone please rise to pledge allegiance and among the silence of 145 police officers across this country killed in the line of duty so far in 2022? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before I begin, I would like to introduce your village board. To my left is trustee Christopher Graziano. Right next to him is trustee Victor Ferrelli. Seat over is trustee Vera. Next to me is village board captain and I am, of course, the mayor. It's my man, Jack Loza. All right, kicking things off is the acceptance of resignation of trustee Gomez. I'm going to give him the pleasure of reading his resignation letter. It's with heavy heart that I, Deputy Mayor Jesus Gomez, I'm sending you my resignation for the position of village trustee. Thank you to all of Woodbury community for allowing me to serve as your elected village trustee. It was a true honor and I am proud to have called Woodbury my home. God bless and keep Woodbury a beautiful home. So can I please have a motion and a second to accept trustee Gomez's resignation as read?
Regretful in motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, come on up.
Funny room, I get more than.
Okay, so it gives me great pleasure. This gives me the opportunity to appoint a new village trustee. So with that in mind, it gives me great pleasure to appoint Sue Suriello to your village board as new village trustee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, so be it. Congratulations. Our deputy mayor is going to come up. The village clerk is going to swear you in.
That's where I think he's going.
Can I take a picture with your new nameplate? It looks great. Congrats.
Thank you, sir. All right, so after many hours spent in tranquil reflection, I have decided, yeah, I said, I have decided to appoint trustee Tara Burek as the new deputy mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As you know, the trustee, the deputy mayor comes with the firm parking and, of course, a great, better dental plan than the other trustees. Okay. Moving right along to introductory local law six of 2022, entitled taxation. Up here in this meeting house entertained public comment on introductory local law six of 2022, which will amend chapter 277, taxation of the village code to provide for Article 8 entitled voluntary firefighters and fire company exemption. Your public notice was printed in the Times-Tableau Record on July 20, 2022. Before I open this to the public, I want to make, so I just wanted to just quickly state the reasoning that we're looking at these days. As many of you know, we had had an issue, or statewide is an issue, with recruitment, retention, and just obtaining volunteers for fire ambulance. So it was part of this board's agenda that we would look for incentives or look to create incentives for our volunteer firemen. We will address the ambulance board since we're able to find a local law to address it. This proposal will enable active firemen members that own property in Woodbury to receive $500 deduction on their property assessment in addition to the other exemptions they qualify for. So I don't know if Chief Burke is on there. I know we had to practice with the kids and it's going to head straight over here. So it was referred to Chief Burke, who had no comments ahead other than to the planning board, and it was referred to the tax successor, where there's no comments were received back from the tax successors. So does anyone in the public wish to speak on this? All right, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing then?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Public comment on agenda items only. So seeing the vastness of our agenda, does anyone wish to speak who's currently present on anything that is on the agenda for this evening?
Good evening, Maria Hunter. I had asked earlier if there was a map for me to review the on the new business letter X in the public hearing. No, excuse me, letter E. Discussion, decision, or transfer of land on Skyline Drive, Eagle Road. There was no, there was an map here for us to see, right? Because I just, the map was online. All of this is online. There should be some.
I have the one that's the same size as the one on the.
Yeah, no, I need larger one because you can't see all the numbers and everything. I would hope that the board does not make a decision tonight and look into the history of this particular property. This property was a balloon test many, many years ago when I was on the planning board. If you're looking from the skyline's here and you're down below and you're looking across, this property's to the left, to the right, where there's supposed to be a subdivision and houses to be built. That's in Ridge Preservation. If you decide to do this and let this house go through, it's going to open up an avenue to have other homes be built up in there. It's in Ridge Preservation. You're going to be disturbing other people's views. It's at the highest point and the development that's down below can see this property and you build houses up there. I know this because I've walked the property many, many years ago on the planning board. So we've asked the board to really look into this, go back into some history, look at some of the balloon testing that was done and try not to make a decision tonight if you have more information. On, let's take a moment to talk to about this. This paper road. It's been a paper road for years and it's only on paper. I forget who actually owns the paper road. I'm not sure if it's the the property owners. I couldn't look at the map clearly before because it's too small for you to figure out. But I would really ask the board to take a look at this. It was not junked and everything so quickly. And you do have a attorney who's here. She's a youngster back then when this all started. She's still. Just no more. I thought you'd answer to me. Just to take a look at this and review everything that was up there because. And the one other thing that's way back when with Ms. Luntie was the town and village engineer for the planning board. He always stated that when you have a piece of property and you only put, you have houses around it, you want to put this house there, you're impacting these other people's backyard views and it's not the best thing to do. And I'm sure if you go back into the minutes of planning board, where the consultant's concerned about that, I'm sure you'll find out information. So thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else wish to speak on?
Yeah, trustee.
Judge, uh, trustee, anything you want?
Tucker Gray. I'd like to know what a paper road means. Does that mean it's just on paper? It's not a real road?
Correct.
Is there going to be an environmental impact study on this? I live up around there. A water problem right now is getting worse. And with everything going on here around Cyrus Joel, it's not getting any better. You're going to put a house overhanging three houses to look down on this? Something's not right with that. If it hasn't been a road for how many years?
I was just going to say that this board isn't approving any subdivision or any provision up there. They're just talking about this piece of land and potentially track them.
Right, I have some impression that people just know that it might be a decision made to have. Is that correct?
Not about the subdivision. They're not going to be a decision. It doesn't work. They're going to have to have that.
Right, so that's why I'm asking. Maybe I'm not a lawyer. I don't have a lot of facts here. I mean, I don't know what to say, but does folly likely come into play on these decisions? Does anybody know?
The plan is more level and discuss all of that.
Okay, because there's a lot of houses that could be impacted on this. And to stick one house there, as this young lady said, there's going to be more houses put up. So I mean, I don't know what's happening. There's no room for wildlife, is there, just now? We're being overrun by the kinders' dog. So now we're going to take more trees down? And what about the drainage? I'm looking, folks have seen where they want to put this house, but it's a really steep hill. You're barely going to walk up it. So just the problem with that, is it going to be like stilts? Does anybody know?
All of that, that's really premature at this point with this because if all that will go through the planning board.
Yeah, I didn't know what the deal was.
I'm just explaining it to you and I understand because it can be a daunting process. But all that in terms of the drainage, in terms of the the climate, all that has to be done through the planning board process.
But tonight's discussion is about the road, is that correct? All right, so what about that drainage? It's going to be a paved road, I take it. Will it be one lane, two lanes?
If that piece of property gets developed, that will be done, studied by the planning board. What is being considered by this for tonight is no development. It's just changing the ownership of a piece of property. So any development that may come from that, they have to go through the environment for reprocess of the planning as well.
I don't know if you know the, but you just told me, you know, it just sounded like words out and I'm trying to disrespect you. But it sounded like, oh, we're just going to do this and then then the next meeting, then more houses are going to be put in. Is that correct? Eventually, if the zoning board decides on it?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that each board has their own jurisdiction. The planning board jurisdiction, which is what the trustee Burek is trying to explain, is the development of the property. If the owner wants to develop the property, that has to go before the planning board. This board is considering selling a portion of this paper road, which means it's just shown on paper, to its developer. And if they choose to develop it, whatever they choose to do, they can choose to use it as a buffer, they can choose to use it as a driveway, whatever they choose to do. If it involves development, that's the planning board jurisdiction to study and review.
Okay, is that a public road?
Right now?
Yes.
No, I don't know if that's a status exam.
No, it's not. Years ago, we were going to develop it to maybe get a secondary entrance. I would bet if something ever happened because obviously you go there's only one way in, one way out of Skyline. But we only got so far because at the bottom of that road where Parkin Drive is, there's property owners that we have to get permission from too. So we weren't kind of landline at that point, so that idea kind of.
Yeah, usually pops up like every seven years.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, yes. When the furniture truck gets stuck in the middle of the road.
But I live down from it, so a huge impact is going to happen until we get back. So I just want to voice my opinion and to see what's going on behind the wheel. I mean, a road, if it's going to be a paved road, that's a big deal. I mean, it has to, it has to be able to get fire engines in there and emergency police vehicles, right?
I would say you should definitely watch for planning board agendas.
Well, wouldn't they be notified? All the surrounding houses, they're way through the planning board process?
I'm not sure what distance is houses from it.
How far are you from there, sir?
Ten feet.
Okay, okay, you would definitely not. You will receive notification.
I was just sure if you was the.
No, it's not ten feet, but I mean, it's like directly.
Mr. Gray, you're lucky because the law treats you coming to the mail from the planning board on the application.
Okay.
So don't throw out any junk mail.
Don't throw out any junk mail. But thank you, appreciate it.
Now, thank you for coming and expressing concern. Anyone else?
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Senator.
No, not at all.
Governor Kelly from Highland Hills. Guess I'm going to reiterate, but a lot of people have said, but the first question I want to ask is, who owns the paper road?
We do.
Right now, the villages' rights are proposed to that paper road. Factor two, all mine are.
Okay. My request is going to be that they do not change hands on that paper road. Number one, as the gentleman just said, when you start to build or anyone starts to build up there, that house that's proposed to be built is going to be high. There are houses in a lower level and I know this has got to go in front of the planning board. This is just my request. There is a swell, a ditch. I don't know what a swell is. I live down Valley Forge. I have a swell behind my house. Once you start digging, you start affecting every other foundation in that around there. There are water problems up there, okay? Everybody else's house up there has a water problem now. There's going to be more water problems. You start taking out trees, where's the water going to go? The path of least resistance. People are going to have bigger water problems. You also have to have fire, two accesses for fire truck. All right, next to that piece of property, there's eight acres. If you allow that person to build that house on that property, you've now opened up a path, an avenue for somebody to build property on those eight acres. Okay, that's all property is under Ridge Preservation. Michael Queen did a balloon test many years ago. That whole ridge came under Ridge Preservation. It's protected land. That piece of property is that close to the edge of Ridge Preservation. That's too close for comfort. I live down in the bottom. I don't want to look up to the top of that ridge and see a house. I see a street light in the winter time when the leaves are up the tree. Nobody down in the bottom of that. Chris lives down there. Andrew lives down there. You don't want to see a house on top of that ridge. Nobody wants it. You're lucky if you see a street light. You're opening that up to a lot more houses when you allow one house. So seriously, consider before you allow them to open, to do anything with that street. Please.
Thank you, John.
We also have a moratorium in effect and we have no water.
All right, John, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on anything on the agenda for this evening?
So moving right along. Can I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from on July 14 meeting?
I don't think I'm motioning.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Desiree, can you please read the act check?
Act Check Four contains chapters 22, 026 through 22, 0305, total of $164,450, something like that.
Okay, please have a motion and a second to read approved act check four as read.
I'll make that motion.
And you sue. Do I have a second? Take that, Mr. Speaker. You're just sleeping at the wheel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fire form equipment request. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve fire form equipment request? Twenty-two of 2022, totaling approximately $2,814 for the purchase of replacement hoses.
I'm making a motion.
That will approve a second CJ at the end. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So it gives me pleasure tonight to cancel our August 11 and 25 meeting. But do not fret, we are rescheduling it. Whoa. Okay, we are rescheduling that for August 16, 2022. So I need a motion and a second.
I'll make that one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that gives us, I think it's sixteen.
Did CJ say aye or no?
He said aye. Big red flag.
Oh, it's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
I'm a no.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
CJ's in favor.
Seriously, no?
Yes, she's standing up. All right, appointment of a full-time assistant to the building inspector. So as you know from our last meeting, Mayor Davis retiring. This place is an opportunity to hire someone new. So can I please have a motion and a second to appoint Mayor Ray Allen to the position of full-time assistant to the building inspector? With starting the ball first, now our rate is about $24.92.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Fire department membership status change. So can please have a motion and a second to change the fire department's status of Thomas Woodsman from active to inactive as requested by the fire chief. Motion. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Increased mileage reimbursement rate. So as mayor, I am required to make the following announcement for the record. Village Board Woodbury recognizes the state has increased the mileage reimbursement rate as of July 1, 2022, 0.625. I need a motion and I don't need anything else. Okay, planning board closing of the next round. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the closure in return of funds posted by Congress, H. Cole, Air, for their application before the planning board?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, adoption of local laws and schedule of a referendum. So can I now please have a motion to enter second to adopt local law six of 2022, which will amend chapter 277, excuse me, taxation of the village code to provide for Article 8 entitled voluntary firefighters and fire company exemption. I need a motion. Desiree, vocal?
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Ferrelli.
Aye.
Trustee Surrall.
Aye.
Trustee here.
Aye.
Trustee General, actually Mayor General.
You can make a statement. Aye. Okay, so that passes. Okay. So I will explain how this is going to work if this protected this local law that we just passed. It is subject to a proposition vote. A mandatory referendum. So we now have to approve the language in which that is going to be on the ballot. So can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the following wording for proposition one? Shall the village of Woodbury provide an additional tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and fire companies owning property within the village of Woodbury assuming it's a real property tax law, or success? It's the extent of $5,000. Motion. Do I have a second? Second by Tara Burek. Motion by CJ Graziano. All in favor?
Aye.
I need one. Okay. All right, so now I'm going to rewind a bit. I'm going to take you back in the Village of Woodbury time machine just a bit if you may. So 2022, the village board adopted local law six, no, 2020, okay? This local law will amend section 57-2B at Route 10-49A. The village code provide for uniform terms and term limits for the village board, village planning board, and village zoning board appeals. The timeline is as follows. On May 28, 2020, the board introduced the first of the planning board in large handling planning department at a public hearing this day. On July 8 of 2020, the GML 239 report received. June 26, 2020, the planning board report with modifications received. And then August 13 of 2022, the public hearing closed and written comments accepted through August 29 of 2020. So once again, once the board adopts this local law, a mandatory referendum is needed. So, um. Okay. So can I please have a motion and a second to adopt local law seven of 2022, which would amend, once again, section 57-2B at Route 10-49A. The village code provide for uniform terms and term limits for the village planning board and the village zoning board appeals.
Oh, my gosh.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Desiree, vocal?
Trustee Graziano.
No.
Trustee Ferrelli. Trustee Surrall. Trustee here. Mayor General.
All right, that passes. Now, once again, we have to adopt the wording for this proposition. But once again, this is subject to an exception, a mandatory referendum. Can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the following wording for proposition two? Shall the village of Woodbury provide for uniform five-year terms for members of both the village planning board and the village zoning board appeals? And in order to ensure more opportunities for U.S. citizen slash residents to serve on these administrative boards, to provide for term limits of such reorganization. So I need a motion and a wording.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No. Okay, so three to.
Okay, finally, adoption of proposition three wording. So once again, we are continuing to investigate incentives and for recruitment and retention for our firemen. And one of those incentives we came up with was increasing the low stat benefit. So currently, for any member that's active in the fire department, they will see $20 in pension benefit when they reach a retirement age. This program was voted upon and approved by the public in the early nineties. At this time, the board would like to increase this entitlement to $30 per active, $20 per year active. This would be ongoing forward basis, so not ritual active to any member already collecting the benefit. And would cause the maximum earned benefit to be $1,200 per month, 40 years active. In order for that to occur, the amendment needs to, once again, be approved by the public. So this will also be a inclusive referendum item. I would like to note for record the cost of the village which changed is $747,845, which the village will pay this additional cost for a tangible period. So first, I need to adopt the resolution as read.
As I was.
Got it?
I'll go with the thoughts.
Okay.
Got it. It's all of the village of Woodbury Board trustees has authorized under Article 11A of the GML, group designated low stat to increase the monthly support from $10 to $30 effective January 1, 2024. Be it for resolve of this resolution, subject to mandatory fire department qualified orders of Village of Woodbury, that are currently in charge. On September 13, 2022, from the hours of noon and 9 p.m., ask for the fire department to become those who want. Be it for resolve of the proposition placed, the fully qualified orders will be as follows. Shall the village of Woodbury increase the fine benefit of service award program established for active volunteer firefighters? A monthly merit benefit of $20 to $30 effective January 1, 2024. Be it for resolve that the low stat shall continue to be administered by the village of Woodbury and that all provisions of the low stats are named as planned. Trustee Gray, this is going forward and not retro.
Okay, so can I please have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as read? Can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, what do you need to do for the wording?
That's all.
That's all. Okay. So that is done in the highest. Alright. Schedule special election, September 13th, 2022, noon to nine PM, right through the village hall. Uh... Okay, so, any motion and second?
Yeah.
So, I need a motion and second to direct the village board to prepare for special election to be held on September 13th, 2022. Beginning at noon and ending at nine PM. All voting will be held at the village hall and there will be no absentee ballots for this election. Motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I need opposed. Alright. So we have a special election.
We get it.
Yeah. Well, the winner, I hear that's... Alright. Okay, can I please, moving on to new business. Can I please have a motion and second to approve the 2022, 2023 CDP HP dental, dental renewal, which has no recent increase from last year? Motion. Second. Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorized. Okay. So can I please have a motion and second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a renewal agreement with the town of Cornwall? Village of Cornwall Hudson and the town of Woodbury relating to continued monitoring of the Woodbury area?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dick Corelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Once again, moving right along, uh, levy of previously exempt properties. Can I please have a motion and second to adopt the following resolution? As presented to levy a appropriated tax amount due on 21 virtue that was previously eligible for exemption. Motion?
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. Okay, scheduled public hearing, moratorium hardship for 28 Woods Road. Can I please have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing to be held on August 16th, 2022, at seven thirty PM? To entertain public comments on moratorium hardship waiver petition received from 28 Woods Road.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There you go. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
No. Okay. Alright. Now comes the, what we talked about in the public comment, discussion, decision, uh, the transfer of land Skyline Drive in the road. Uh, in the Skyline development, there is parcel that is land out. That parcel currently has an application before the planning board, online orange incorporated. They have requested the village give up its rights to a possible extension of senior road to an obstructive driveway to access the property of the house they planted there. Tax map, the section the village owns is now is known as Skyline Drive, which at one point could have been extended. Using Pride Street known as Coffee Drive into the upper portion of Skyline development as an emergency access road. This was never realized due to cost. Attorney has researched the issue and the assessed worth of the rights in question at three thousand?
Three thousand.
Yep. The board needs to decide if they want to relinquish these rights and sell them to the applicant at a asking price of three thousand. So, discussion, for starters. Uh, so what can you do at the end today?
No, I have no.
None. Yeah? No. Is that new? Um, you have nothing air or no, you've already done?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Sue, I know you're, uh, new, so I don't know if you had a chance to catch up with all of this.
I did.
Okay.
It's Sue.
I know. She lives there. That boy exists.
No, no.
She wouldn't have the chance to catch up. That's right. Anyway. Trusty Suriel.
Yes. I... I guess at this point in my head, I'm kinda thinking more research might need to be done with regards to that land transfer because it does open up. Something bad. Hi.
Who are you?
John Newmark.
Yeah.
Um, I am a very advocate for protecting, for preservation and, um, a hero of your comments. Can you not hear me? I'm sorry. I hear everything you all said.
That's wonderful.
I'm afraid, I'm very loud, so I can project. Um, I think... You have to consider everyone who lives around, underneath, um, next to, um... And I agree when you talk about wildlife and not having anywhere to go. I know, I don't know about all of you on board, but I have more bears now and wildlife now than ever. And I do attribute that to them having no place to go. Um, so I am inclined to agree with the comments I have heard here tonight.
Uh... Kelly Norman, would you wish to weigh in on anything else with this? Before I put it out to the board for a vote?
I mean, I don't have anything really further to say. I think, uh, the talks were about this, there hasn't been research done regarding ownership, um, and the cost of the property. So there are other avenues that the, um, property owner can pursue. So, um, that's, I don't want anybody either on the board or in the public to think that either by going for this or by going against it, it necessarily shuts down any development of a person's property or house, um, around the...
What is the benefit of selling? I mean, money is not, money is tricked out in that way, so it's not...
Money is a dropping bucket.
That's it. So what is the benefit of any benefit at first?
Really not.
But it seems like there's a lot of...
Yeah.
...judgment to it. But it's...
I agree. Other than, other than the financial gain, which once again is a dropping bucket, what the village just needs? Uh... I couldn't even tell you about it, but it is.
Not much.
Not much.
Not much. So, I'm gathered from our hearing for the board that we can just move forward and vote on this. Um, we've done the discussion part of it, so at this time, is the board comfortable with moving forward and voting on the same?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, do I have a motion and a second to accept all lines, all mine Orange Incorporated? Their offer of three thousand dollars to sell this paperwork?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, who's got a call?
Can I now vote? CJ?
No.
Yeah?
No.
Sue?
No.
Tara?
No.
And I'm also no. So I will authorize the attorney to draft a OL letter to all mine Orange. And we wish them the best of luck. Okay. Moving right along. Schedule a public hearing, introductory Local Law 7 of 22, 2022, water bill late charge. Can I please have a motion and a second to introduce Local Law 7 of 2022? Which would amend Chapter 298-25 of the village code entitled Water? To increase the late charges for failure paid water bills.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Can I now please have a motion and second to refer introductory Local Law 7 of 2022 to the water, wastewater administrator for comments? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, finally, can I please have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on August 16th, 2022, at seven thirty PM? To entertain public comment on introductory Local Law 7 of 2022?
I'll make that one.
Sue, the motion, do I have a second? Second. Tara? All in favor?
Aye.
No. Full of those that I made. I have to stay consistent, I don't want the meeting on the sixteenth, I don't want everything now, that's all I'm saying.
Alright. So, we have a revised agreement for the dioxide monitoring. Where revisions remain to our initial agreement, which now includes new chemical storage tanks at two sites. The price of four ten per gallon instead of four fifteen per gallon is going to be honored by the vendor. So now can I, I please have a motion and second to authorize me?
Okay.
To sign a revised agreement for dioxide monitoring with E-Bot. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay. We have, uh, first, a couple of extra items. So, uh, town of Woodbury, I received correspondence from supervisor Burke requesting that the village board raid the two hundred dollar application fee for food truck. To be the John P Burke pool this coming weekend. The food truck in question was inspected for compliance by a building inspector. So at this time, can I please have a motion and a second to approve the waiting set application fee to the town of Woodbury? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need opposed. Boom. Okay. So, um, what's that, Murphy's Law?
Yep, the good one.
Will go wrong? So, the boilers are now no longer in service near the rich hall. So it means that we get to do the first of several things. Uh, first, we're going to pass a resolution to, um, hopefully assist us. Then potentially getting some rebates through our climate smart communities grant. So, I'm gonna read the resolution and then I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second to approve. Whereas the village of Woodbury hereby requests financial assistance from New York State Climate Smart Communities Grant Program. Pursued through environmental conservation law Article 54, Title 15. And whereas the village of Woodbury certifies that it has identified hundred thousand dollars in matching funds from the general fund pursuant to the requirements of the environmental conservation law Article 54, Title 15. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Woodbury hereby authorizes me.
The mayor.
The mayor. An official or employee's applicants ahead, it's the middle of an application to the consularly funding application. For a hundred and twenty thousand dollars can use your rich hall food. Alright, so can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
We have a discussion. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Um, while we're utilizing climate smart grants for this, the boiler is in itself is inherently dumb and it's not repaired, it's a replacement.
Yep.
Um, since we've joined the climate smart community program, should we be looking at conversion of the geothermal or something else that's more environmentally friendly than a regular fossil oil fired fire burner? Boiler for this project, especially with the...
We are, I think we're way ahead of that. We actually threw united our service contract for boiler. That was one of the requirements that we made. That this will now be an energy efficient oiling boom, which actually includes a replacement, the replacement of the water heater as well. So I get all that, but still...
Have we looked at anything but geothermal?
We haven't looked at anything further down that road. So let me suggest...
What's the advantage? I know nothing about that.
Yeah, geothermal is, takes water that you bring food, you bury it in the ground, and in the winter, the ground is hotter than, than the surrounding air, so it transfers heat to the water back to the, uh, extanger. In the summer, it's reverse, it takes heat out of the water. So it kind of, it's much more environmentally friendly, less, use much less food.
Uh, what are we looking at, the cost there?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, if you look at, it was recently down, probably, at least a little, I'm not even gonna say no to the grant, I'm saying, we're asking for a grant.
Well, we can do that. I just have to add quickly because the concern is is that based on this boiler that we've been inspect out? It's a four weekly time to retain and then it's at least two or three weeks to install. And I, I can't keep this building open when it starts to get cold out there. So I, we can look into that. Uh, I just need to pass this resolution, which I believe is...
What about you, Nick?
Motion and second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I need opposed. And I will take your suggestion, sir. And we'll, and we'll, we'll look into that. Okay. Look at that, we got through it and we got through it in forty-five minutes. We record that. So at this time, uh, I will go out to the public for all comments on anything in life, if you wish to discuss.
Anything in life?
Anything. I... There you go. That's I... That's the only question.
I'm sorry, Rob, but this is gonna be directed at you. Hopefully. My name is Tom Howell and I live at 25 Oakland Avenue. And, uh, about two years ago, I approached Rob about, um, a sinkhole that's been opening up. And I've been pulling it in. Because between Midland and Oakland, there's a storm drain pipe that comes down the property. And I know it's not on my property, but my property is maintained. It's on a vacant lot that was owned by, or still is owned by Joe Scouso or Susan, uh, Scouso. But they have since moved. My concern, because I have two young grandchildren, is that woken on property and formed into a bigger sinkhole that I don't see. Okay? And so, I asked you, Rob, and you said you were gonna wait for the, the ground part done two years ago? And two cycles have come down, I don't know. And it's concerning. And the unconcern for that safe right of way, as I was told, I had been there in nineteen eighty-nine, was somebody was supposed to maintain. And they got all these trees that are dying on that right of way that are danger...
Is there a village right of way? Was that... Is there a village right of way? Is it by the scouts?
No, it's the, it's the right of way, you're supposed to, the way I was told, that you, not by you, by your predecessors. That twenty feet on either side of that pipe was supposed to be maintained and free of trees and stuff like that. That has never been done. I have to keep my side of the property line, uh, free of trees. Alright? But now these trees are dying and they pose a risk of just falling off my house. Alright? So if you tell me it's not your responsibility, then I'm gonna have to reach out to the scouts and try and get them to correct it. Alright? But they're not someplace down in Georgia right now, so...
So, Rob, is it ours, is it the village's responsibility? I hope to pull the section block in line to find out, I'm not gonna make that comment unless...
No, I'm definitely, Rob, I'm...
But if it is ours, I will go in there.
I will, I will.
On here, on this street, on this property and the other property. Cause I know there's trees that actually sit on top of these, but we'll fall back with that.
Right. And listen, I'm not, I, I raided it two years, Rob, and you know, I missed it. I missed it, alright? And, but it's concerning. Now we got two old grandchildren, two of them want to open the property. And I don't want that to fall into the sinkhole.
Mr. Howell, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll look into that information. If it is not the village's responsibility, then I have the direct ability department to get hold of the property owner.
Okay.
And issue violations if necessary to get them to correct, corrective measures.
Okay.
Because if it is legitimately a safety hazard, they're concerned, then that comes back to us and I can have the building department be the... Hammer.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright. And my own comment is about, on Summit Avenue, there is now, uh, a school, preschool, daycare school?
It's a group home.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. There's not the lake pit or something.
Oh. The one, that one's up by the water tower. That, I know you guys, you know, whatever. But why, when did the, the zoning change that allows for, other than residential use?
Well, we know for, for Summit Avenue with these particular houses?
It's all houses, Summit Avenue. It's all, it's the one that comes up from, um, opposite the diner, all the way to the top of the hill by the water tower.
Okay. What's, go back just a little bit, just back to your question. I know the, I know we're talking about...
Why all sudden a private home is being turned into, into a daycare center or a private school?
Code that retains...
But you also, but you also stated that letters would go out, uh, to the other gentleman here, uh, changes, they would never let it in. But you also, but you also stated that letters would go out to the other gentleman here, changes, they would never let it in.
Yeah, but they would.
You're assuming there was a change, I don't believe there was any type of change.
But how does a private home become a business in a residential neighborhood? That's basically what it comes down to.
I couldn't tell you, I'm not sure with the zoning of the particular property that is being referenced. There were several things that were said here that could have been either an exception to reuse for a number of years ago, it could be a permitted use in the district, or it could be a group home that's being referenced, and those are permitted.
He's referencing a daycare.
Okay, and that's something that then, you know, we're going to the Building Department's attention, but it may be something that is approved there.
Okay. Once again, Mr. Howell, we'll change it to the Building Department, and we'll look into it. Those are all they got from certified through state laws?
Those have to go certified through the state, but that doesn't have anything to do with zoning.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Anyone else with a couple of comments?
I'm happy that Michael is on Zoom meeting tonight, and that's Penella, our building inspector. I wanna thank him for his response to a couple of my concerns recently. One of them being, and also to Mayor for acting quickly with those signs that showed up on along thirty-two. Thank you for getting them down, I know I personally collected over twelve of them and left them on that door. So I wanna thank you for both of you for taking care of that. And I know Michael's taking care of another issue which I brought up, which is gonna segue into, um, I would really, I'm asking this board, please give me an invitation to the Revitalization Committee. I wanna talk to them as a resident and also as a verification chairperson. I'm seeing too much disregard in this town, village, along thirty-two. I need to ask some questions about sidewalks, ownership of the residents, what they're supposed to be maintaining, with mowing and weeding, dumping, it's become, it's horrible. I've lived in this area in Woodbury for forty-three years, and a decline I see that's happening, it's horrible. We need to stop, we need to take a look at it. We're the gateway to Orange County. And also with that, the Republican primary was done in June. I am tired of seeing the sheriff's signs from Central Valley to more, I mean, south down to Larkin Drive and beyond. That's Jones and Arteia, Arteia?
Arteia, yeah.
Someone. I know political signs are loud, we can't touch them, but the primary was six weeks ago. There was also signs, the governor who ran, there in town as well, on our private property, I can't do anything about that. We're gonna be having another primary coming up. They have three Democrats running for Congress. That's in August, what is that now, what is that primary that's ready for? I forget, Catholic day it was. We may be seeing some of those signs, we can't stop the political signs, but we can ask these people, can you remove the links? I don't know how to do it.
Maria, you know you can, but ever since that litigation.
I was there watching President in twenty forty and he was not today. I know it is, but we have to get down to these, the Republican Committee, Democrat Committee, Observatory Committee, I don't care who we have to get to. But those committees should be held responsible somehow.
What I, what I can do is just talk, cause I'm on the road, we talked to Don Sebo, and I'm sure he's got somebody he can talk to, the Jones camp or the Arteia camp. Because yes, I think, I wouldn't even know who the bigger end is because they're, they're still out. The signs, but it is kind of slippery slope to touch them.
I know that very well, I was there when that woman made her cry and made me go into a rage with what happened with that. But it's, other besides that, I really wanna be invited to the Revitalization Committee. I was told by Supervisor in January chamber meeting, we'll be invited, and I still haven't been invited. I have some ideas, I have some suggestions, let's work together. I mean, we've gotta come together and fix this. We have to make it beautiful again, we have to make it that people wanna come here. I don't care if people say we're being taken over, this is our Woodbury, we need to keep it in preserved as best we can, not get it all crushed up.
Alright, thank you, Maria. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? There's one person online, I will ask Dick, he's on the bottom corner, it's like an eye exam for me. That's a woman.
See, it's not me.
I don't even know.
What's my account?
Alright, anyway, I'll introduce them.
Yeah.
Hey, Zeus.
It's Zeus.
Is it?
No, he's Zeus. Captain, it's Zeus.
Oh, okay, so it's Gomez, you here? No?
He just joined. We changed his name.
There you go. What's going on? Oh, there it is. With the guns at.
Why, oh, I dressed up for the occasion.
It's a little bit above what we normally wear to a meeting, so. I didn't throw up your guns like this when you were in Woodbury, I gotta tell you. So you got anything, sir?
Um, are we at the end or no?
Yes.
Oh.
You can speak.
Um, just wanna again reiterate the paper I sent, say thank you to all, and I was really proud to serve you guys as best as I could. Now, I tried to be as good as I could, I mean, wasn't perfect, but I tried, you know? I never claimed to be a politician, but I tried my best to help as much as I could, whenever I could, and if not, I tried to get the help I could with like help from like Desiree, like I mentioned, all the help that she gave us, the mayor himself, and all the department heads that are phenomenal. And they were always there to help and guide us also along, understanding their ins and outs. So thank you all again, and I wish you all happiness, kindness, and great future together.
Thank you, Trustee Gomez. How are you enjoying our, it's horrible, are you ready to move back to country house?
It's got better internet.
You guys, yeah, you guys have been hotter than we have been down here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Never felt this so bad, we've had more rain than you guys for sure.
That's some up here.
Yeah, we could use it, we were supposed to get rain tonight, we didn't get nothing.
Oh, we've got tons and tons of it.
It's like Arizona.
Apparently we're going now into a drought, this peak of summer. It's great, cause I'm going to Disney. Hopefully it won't rain.
Thank you, Jesus. Uh, going out to department comments, so starting with Mickey Phillips, I see you're on here.
I ain't got nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you, sir. Penella.
Good evening, no comment this evening, sir.
Thank you. Rob White.
I don't have anything to do.
Nothing. Chief Burke.
I just wanna thank the board for their efforts in the food banter retention. That contained at least the first few steps in that, hopefully we'll see if you can give you a few people, right?
We just need to get bodies, now they just open eyes.
Or thank you all for taking those steps.
No, thank you, Chief Burke, thank you, and thank the guys for all they do for Woodbury, I can't say.
And girls.
And girls, excuse me.
Conquering all.
Penella, Chief Burke.
I wanna be hers. No.
Don, department head.
Oh, now with department?
Yes, it's for June, yeah, this week, next week, we'll see.
So I didn't think I was gonna have to announce an election again until October, but apparently we have another primary later this summer, August twenty-third, right in the middle of, when everyone's on vacation. It is for congressional candidate, only for Democrats. And everybody who's a Democrat that wants to vote in said election is voting at the Central Valley Firehouse. Everybody is voting at the Central Valley Firehouse, Democrats, for that position. Everyone.
You have Mickey.
I don't think he has. I'm sure, I'm gonna say it, every meeting between now and August twenty-third.
Oh, long.
You get to announce September thirteenth special election, which will all be here. And everyone will vote here unless you live in here, in which case you don't vote, you're not gonna go to Woodbury. So August twenty-third, Democrats only, everyone at Central Valley Firehouse, September thirteenth, everybody in the Village of Woodbury, regardless of party affiliation, here, Village Hall, noon to nine, I think. Here, those are your offices, so.
Sounds good. Emily Danish, for September thirteenth.
Well, break the law before obviously parents and people, one hundred people. Tara's gonna talk about voting empathy.
Yeah.
Empathy. Empathy, sorry.
Okay, moving out to the board, so starting with Trustee Graziano.
Alright, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out, I'd like to, to see everybody here. I have two things to add, one, congratulations to Sue, very welcome addition to our board, a very worthy choice. And also congratulations to our brand new matter of Deputy Mayor, another very good choice. And we'll bumble off with the mayor, so you can take over very shortly. That's all, thank you, everybody, stay cool, it's very hot and very dry, and just try and stay cool as they are.
Thank you, Trustee Graziano, Trustee Correlli, dazzle us with your words of wisdom, so we'll be short. Again, I wanna thank everybody that came out, everybody that joined on Zoom for today's meeting. Again, I wanna welcome Susan to the board, I'm glad to have you, so it's gonna be nice to work with you. And Tower, congratulations on your appointment, Deputy Mayor, you do a great job. And that's all, good talking to you. Very good. Our newest trustee, Trustee Suriello.
I was just about to say a lot of today afternoon, but some great people, and I know I have big shoes to fill, my friend.
And guns, you have big guns.
I don't have big guns, but, and I'm also super excited for the second one that I'm meeting.
Yay, only hanging, no.
Heather, many to one for what?
Yeah, first, first one was Stephanie Lee, the mayor, and then.
That's not your first one, so.
Yeah, and actually, and she was joining Sebel to push up the mayor, so that makes you seven. So, all good, all good, but it's been a while, it's been twelve years since there's been, you know, Deputy Mayor, and two women on the board, so. Looking right along.
Justin Yurk.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, thank you for trusting me. This is a very strange meeting for me, this is my first without Jesus being next to me, cracking jokes, making me laugh. And I don't know if all of you heard the things that he would say, but I just, I really learned a lot of self-control sitting next to him over the years. He's really made this, the transition from not being in politics to being in politics quite easy. And I actually really do owe him that gratitude. I didn't know how I would feel about sitting up here without him, because Jesus and his family have really become constant with me and my family, so. This is really strange, I'm sure, I hope Marisol's listening, cause you guys, you're really missed. So I remember when I first met Jesus, we were volunteering for the PTA in our daughter's school, kindergarten, and we were performing at lunchtime theater as, I think we were squirrels or a cow, I don't remember, some animal. And I just remember, yeah, no, no, but we were doing some childhood work. Yes, but we, we looked really ridiculous, and my husband Chris, who's on, he eats while we're all dressed up, we had pictures, we did proof on daily will surface. And I just remember, I only lived here three months, and Jesus and Marisol were the warmest people I had met in a very long time, and it was just refreshing to see us make fools of ourselves, and just, it was, it was outrageous. When you ask them about what they remember best about kindergarten, they will always say lunchtime theater. And it was, it was really nice to share that with Jesus, and then moving on to sitting next to him with board for two and a half years, I have learned so much just listening to him. He's a deeply principled man, very hardworking, stands his ground, whether it's good or bad, you weren't changing his mind, and I always appreciated that. And he always stood by his word, so his word was golden. I love the perspective he offered the board as a retired police officer. He would always look at the person, at the content, judge the person first, and then make his determination, and you know what? He's always been dead on. Almost every topic that has rose up to us, he was always, look at the person, and you know what? He's a hundred percent correct. He was always the voice of common reason, and I truly don't want to miss that. We are a very opinionated board, so welcome, I hope you share in that, and Jesus would often level us out. And just, he would always listen and be the last to speak, the one who spoke was profound. He was always one of the first to step up and volunteer, and you know, I know you can look around and you don't see many people stepping up the PTA, because everybody's so busy and not willing to give their time, but him and his wife were always the first two to raise their hands. And this is a true detriment to the community, their loss, I mean, it's, you know, our loss is Florida's gain. And I will miss working with such a community-minded person, of strong character, and one of the most honest and straightforward people I've ever met. So thank you, Jesus, for your service to our home, Woodbury. You're now previous chapter. You're onto a much sunnier and more relaxed phase of your life for you, Marisol, and your children. And we already, I know we miss you terribly, and wish you all the luck in the world in your new home. So thank you very much for everything that you've given to us and to me personally, so thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Sue, you are, I've always liked you. Congratulations on your appointment. You know what, I'm very tough on people quietly, I always appreciated your attention to detail. You don't take, you're very much like Jesus, you do your own homework. You don't take, you don't go with the popular opinion always, and that's the, sometimes may make people not appreciate your voice, but I always have, and I welcome your opinion and your perspective in our discussions going forward, and the fact that you have an accounting background for me is a huge plus. So welcome and best of luck to you, and good luck to all of us, this is, we can get pretty tough, we have a lot on our plates, and I think you're up to it, so. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, good night, I'm sorry that was long, and I'm sorry, Jesus, I made you cry, I held it in, I am so proud of myself, I'm gonna cry when I get home, thank you.
But I was not the blubbering idiot that I was at the last meetings.
Oh, that was all.
Yeah, I didn't think that was gonna happen.
Yeah, you did.
So as tough as the decision was, or not the decision was, but as tough as it was to lose Jesus, the decision to meet was very easy in terms of replacing him on board. I had the pleasure of working with Sue Suriello when I dared to my wife and probably to up my chances of, you know, smoochy smoochy time, right? So I dared, she dared me to apply for the Central Valley PTA, and so there I was in a room full of mothers, and there's this lone gentleman there, who actually not only joined the PTA, but then became the reporting secretary, which is quite honestly the worst job you can have in any organization, okay?
Yes, it is.
She'll tell you, cause she's coming, I don't know how many different organizations. But in my time there, Sue was amazing. The amount of programs that Central Valley Elementary did for that term that I was there were, it was constant programs and events for the kids, all the kids, including my own, which was the biggest reason why I initially did this. Not so much the smoochy smoochy time, but it was really about my kid. So she is a welcome addition to this board, and she is very different than Mr. Gomez, who I will always miss, but she does her homework, she understands what the village does to begin with, because she spent all those times of planning and zoning boards, fighting the good fight, so Sue, welcome aboard. And Deputy Mayor, Tara Bure. So for those that don't know, Tower and I probably speak almost every day, where I go, this is gonna be a quick call, and then I turn out to be Vic Correlli, where, where I'm on the phone with her for twenty minutes, twenty minutes it's fine.
Twenty, twenty is like, hi, how are you?
Yeah.
That's crazy, isn't it?
Yes, and then I scroll out of control, which if you ever seen the movie, I'll scroll means that I've gone off into other tangents. But she really is completely grounded, she's got the best interests of the village at heart, and quite honestly, I couldn't have chosen a better person to serve as Deputy Mayor for the Village of Woodbury, so thank you for accepting.
I have very big shoes to fill, so.
Yes, you do, or guns to fill, guns. Yeah, she do, or guns to fill, guns, gonna have to get you to work out, so.
Tara, tell the truth, she's the one that keeps us on the phone.
I think it's Andrew, I agree, I can, I can count on that.
So, many things that we see in meeting last night, and it goes, one more thing, one getting out the door. Anyway, I know it was a long agenda tonight, I wanna thank everybody for bearing with us, uh, like I said, it just, it just shows the amount of work we have in front of us, and we'll continue to have in front of us as the weeks and months go on, so thank you once again for joining us. Um, we've no further business to discuss, comments received, please have a motion and a second to adjourn, it's me.
Motion.
Second. Second.
The quickest motion alive, ah.
Next meeting will be Tuesday, August sixteenth at seven thirty PM. We're gonna take the day as after you, Jesus. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.
Hey.
I went by your house today. I put your garbage can up.